Good evening. I'd like to call this special call meeting for the city of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for invocation, Mr. Aguero?
Attorney Father, thanks for bringing us together this evening. We ask for your wisdom to guide our permission as a governor and for direction in making decisions that are fair and just. Grant us unity and clear minds as we discuss what is best for the city and our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Be supplied with pleasure, Legion.
A good legion, super flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, equal to all, liberty and justice for.
Thank you, may be seated.
Item number five under presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation of the San Juan Parks and Recreation 2024-2025 School Participation Award. Mr. Ramiro Moreno, our intern director of Parks and Rec is here with us.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager, Secretariat. We're here tonight to present the school award for our sixth grade, Austin Middle School. And it's just a sixth grade competition only that they compete in. They're part of the Parks and Recreation Program. They brought in, they had a school enrollment for just sixth grade only of 217, and they enrolled 105, forty-eight point thirty-nine percent. And they're competing against RIM, so this year it went to Austin. They've been going back and forth, Austin and RIM. So this year, Austin is our proud winner. For the bragging rights for the team trophy they carry around, they get to showcase that against two other schools and RIM specifically. And then when they have their principal meeting, almost everyone, they're gonna be bragging about it with the school district. The sports that they compete in is volleyball, tackle football, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball for Austin Middle School. Here representing the school from Stephen F. Austin is Principal Gisela Salinas Ramirez. And we have Coach Gabby Ortiz. Coach Edgar Ramos is gonna be here. He's at a cross-country meet, I think in Palmview, correct? Palmview. So he couldn't make it today. But, I mean, they've been very instrumental with pushing our programs, our San Juan Parks and Rec programs, or making them grow, utilizing their facilities. It's currently, we're using their facilities until ours gets almost completely done. And we greatly appreciate all the help y'all have done in pushing our programs and providing a support for these youths to come and compete, stay in our city. And also, they're doing so well that we're getting our neighboring cities sending their kids over to our programs also. But once again, thank you and appreciate everything that y'all have done for the city of San Juan Parks and Recreation programs.
Well, we're ready. Thank you. All right. Congratulations. Good job. Good job.
Our next award presentation is for the elementary division. There's eight elementary schools here in the city of San Juan. And Carmen seems to be holding that trophy year in, year out. They've been a very strong supporter of our programs, and they're currently supporting our program very strong this school year also. They competed in volleyball, black football, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball, winter baseball for six U and eight U. So these were our numbers are compiled for. Their school count, when it was 684, they had a total enrollment of 298, forty-three point fifty-seven percent. Almost half of their schools is registered in our programs. That's just one school. And they got first place again for, I think, the fifth year in a row, fourth year in a row. So it's something that's real good, that the parents are very supportive of our programs. The coaches, the principals are very supportive of our programs, and we really appreciate their assistance and pushing our programs season in, season out, year in, year out, and allowing the teams to practice at their school too. Here representing the school, our Edith Ethel Carmen Elementary's Principal, VNA Viegas. Coach Martin Gao. Assistant Principal, Dr. Lisa Ramos. Assistant Principal, Christina Rubio. A lot of schools compete for this trophy. They've gotten close. Other schools have gotten close. I won't mention their names, but they hold on. Carmen keeps on holding on to that trophy. And it's gonna be hard to take it away from them, that's all. That's all I have to say, is it's a very strong supportive group there. Parents, administration, and P.E. coaches that are there. We really appreciate everything you've done for our San Juan Parks and Rec programs.
Congratulations. Some good jazz. Congratulations.
I just wanted to add, Alex Lopez, our recreation supervisor, he's been spearheading these programs the last couple of years. Been doing real good out there. So he's been pushing these programs with the parents, coaches, and the middle schools and elementary schools. Great appreciation.
Just like to make a comment. I want to thank the PSGISD School District for allowing us to. I know we partner up with them as far as using their gyms and stuff like that. So I want to thank them, the board, and their staff, the whole coaching staff as well, for letting our kids, you know, go in there and become great athletes. So once again, I want to thank the school board and PSGISD, and y'all principals and, you know, your staff. Thank you so much for the great work that you do for our kids. You know, it takes very special people to do that kind of work. And I really thank you guys for all the hard work. You know, it doesn't go unnoticed, believe me. We have a lot of group of kids who, you know, come down the pipeline, end up going to be, you know, professionals. So, and it starts with you guys. So once again, thank you so much. Just give them a big round of applause for the great work that they've done. Thank you so much. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. V.
Yes, Sir Mayor, continuing under presentations. We have the presentation on departmental reports. With us tonight, we have the Department of Planning and Zoning, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Sanitation, and the San Juan Memorial Library. All directors are present. Should we have any questions?
This time, any questions for the directors? Any questions?
Yes.
We're good? All right. Go ahead, sir. We're good.
Yes, Sir. Under item number six, public hearing ordinances. Under letter A, we have "Hold a Public Hearing and Consider an Orderance Regarding the Voluntary Annexation Petition of the 3.03-acre tract of land out of Lot 12, Stewart's Addition to Conway Gardens, located approximately 600 feet north of Fall Acres Road along the west side of Stewart Road, as requested by Taisha Group LLC." With us, we have Ms. Monica Gomez, our interim director of planning.
Hi, good evening. This is the second public hearing regarding the annexation petition received of a 3.03-acre tract of land located a quarter of miles south of Moore Road along the west side of Stewart Road. On September 23rd, 2025, the city commission accepted voluntary annexation petition. As part of the packet, you can have a petition of the annexation. The survey means some bound description for reference, and staff recommendation is for approval. This is the second public hearing, and this matter is now before you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:20 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? For or against?
I went to see the tract of land a couple of weeks, and then I went back. And like I tell you, your decisions can make us or break us. And they say that most of you are educated or have a formal education. And what I'm talking about, you don't know about, to educate yourself or ask questions because you have resources. I don't ask that you have common sense. I do ask that you look for facts and have the facts. And how font it works, if we remove... First of all, elevations, it's a bowl. Second, the infrastructure, I don't think we still have it. And yes, we can connect new pipes to all smaller... Not smaller, but not as thick. So yes, the community is gonna have new, and we're gonna pay half of it. But what about the rest of the infrastructure that is not up to par? You may serve, but I would like to know the capacity, because if not, we would be underserving those people, and we're gonna have the same issue that happens on 495 along the canal, that corner that gets flooded. That last time, there were screaming people out there. And the county says, "Pumps." Yes, but people are losing their livelihoods, their homes. They have to replace clothes, mattresses. Everything's stuck in there because of our ignorance. Si no sabes, go find out. Go talk to those people. Where they are right now because of poor planning. No sé quién, but it got done. Mal hecho, but it got done. Like a lot of stuff. We're protecting our future, because we're gonna have to put money into something that if y'all don't get the facts and go along with the flow. And we'll remind you guys, unless you go live to Macala in a better town that does carry an infrastructure that could do, grow more to sound. But we'll see you on the community. Another fact. The drainage, we could put new water, but the drainage, is it coming over here? Is it gonna put more pressure here? The water, yes? Okay, that's nice. I don't know, but I learned something new. Thank you, Mr. V. So what are you all gonna do about? You all got homework. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Monica? Not. Close this at 6:24 PM. Is there a motion approved?
Second.
There's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven, discussion of possible action on all the following matters. Letter A, discussion of possible action, if any, through the Hidalgo County, Urban County, preliminary work plan for fiscal year 2026 months. Again, we have Ms. Monica, our interim director.
Yes, this agenda item is for the approval of the preliminary work plan for Hidalgo County, Urban County Program. On October 14th, a public hearing was held where several nonprofit organizations submitted funding requests to the Community Development Blog Grant, CDVG Program. The CIO San Juan was awarded a total of $279,966 for the fiscal year of 2026. The staff recommends the following allocation based on funding levels from the previous years. We are requesting, or we are recommending $3,000 for general administration, which cover the advertisement and posting. $247,186 for the street improvements project for Guadalupe and San Ramon Street and Los Laureles Estates located along Sergeant Don Altavino Road. $10,000 for Amigos del Valle to provide home delivery meals to nine citizens in San Juan for 165 days. $5,000 for the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council helping with assistance of medication, nutritional supplements, lighthouse keeping, meal preparation to 30 low-income people with disabilities. $10,000 for Nuestra Clínica del Valle to assist with medical, dental, and behavioral services to 75 uninsured children and adults in San Juan. $5,000 to Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo and Star Counties to provide support to abused and eclectic childrens. Attached to the packet on page 59, you can find the distribution of funds from the past six years from due reference. As I mentioned, this is the preliminary work plan for the Hidalgo County, Urban County Program.
Any questions for Ms. Monica? Not. Is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead.
Letter B, the preliminary plat approval with variances at Black Hills Estates, two being a 13.46-acre tract of land out of the lot, block 39, Alamo Land Insurance Company subdivision, located approximately 2,000 feet west of Cesar Chavez Road along the south side of Sioux Road, as requested by Barreta Infrastructure Group Incorporated.
The developer is proposing a 13.46-acre tract of land located approximately a quarter of mile west of Cesar Chavez Road along the west side of Sioux Road for the development of 66 single-family residential subdivisions. The proposed subdivision will be included to points of access along Sioux Road. The zoning is located in a flat, in a single-family residence district. The property is located within a flat zone B, which is not a flat zone elevation. The infrastructure, the water, belongs to the North Alamo Water Supply Corporation, the city, to the CIO San Juan. The developer is requesting two variances to the Unified Development Code, Appendix A, Chapter 2, Article 6, Area and Height Requirement, Section 1. To do not comply with a minimum lot width from 60 feet, they are proposing 54 feet. And do not comply with a minimum lot depth as required 100 feet, they are proposing 140 feet. The staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat and the variances, subject to addressing all the staff comments attached to the packet.
Any question for Ms. Monica?
May I stop? This is not a public comment part of the meeting. The questions are not from the public. The questions are from the council. I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. Now, if there's a comment that needed to be made for this thing, that should have been done at the time of public comment. You could have talked about almost any agenda item. So I want to make sure that you understand that. I don't want to, I want to make sure that you understand that right now it would be a disruption, and we don't want to do that. Okay?
Just give me about three minutes, 25. So when Mario said, that I told him that I could say something else, so I can only speak once, three minutes, in any moment in this meeting? Or when I talk to...
You can make a comment regardless of your order of the agenda. Obviously, we need to put it in public comment.
Exactly.
Okay. Now, if it's a public hearing, it's different.
Exactly.
So right now, this is not a public hearing.
Exactly. So please, Mr. V, if it's a public hearing, any more?
I apologize. This is not a public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Monica? If the council is not, is there a motion approved? So move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Letter C, preliminary plat approval with variances for Espina subdivision being a 1.10-acre tract of land out of Lot 6, block 39, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision, located approximately 1,500 feet east from Cesar Chavez Road along the north side of FM 495, as requested by Barreta Infrastructure Group Incorporated.
The developer is proposing to subdivide 1.10-acre tract of land located approximately a half a mile west from Cesar Chavez Road along the north side of 495 for the development of a one-lot commercial subdivision. The property is located in a general business district, C2, and in a flat zone B, which is not considered a flat zone. The water belongs to North Alamo Water Supply Corporation, the sewer from the CIO San Juan. The developer is requesting the following variance to the Unified Development Code, Appendix A, Chapter 3, Article 3, procedures and requirements to reduce and require 50 for utilities meant around the subdivision as established on the subdivision ordinance. And they, the staff is recommending the approval of the preliminary plat and the variance request, subject to the, to the, to the subject to the addressing of all the staff comments attached to the packet.
Any questions for Ms. Monica? Ms. Monica, this was approved six unanimous?
Yes. That line is already approved.
So is there a motion approved? So move. All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Under letter D, the discussion of possible action, if any, authorizing the city manager to approve a budget amendment to increase the San Juan Fire Department's other equipment, 30-470.7957, account for 76,733 and 40 cents for the fiscal year 2025-2026.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Saint Commissioners. This is an award that was through the border zone for some equipment. This is our fourth award, and we've been very fortunate to secure some of this equipment that's needed for firefighting. I just need your approval so we can proceed with the funding. Any questions for Chief? Now, is there a motion approved? So move. Second. All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Under letter E, discussion of possible action, if any, authorizing the city manager to approve a budget amendment to increase the San Juan Fire Department's other equipment account, 30-470.7957, the account for $64,400 for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Chief?
This is through the FEMA, Homeland Security. We secured, the initial submittal for the grant was 240,000, but we only got awarded 64,000. We have a match on this one of 5,000. So it's for additional firefighting equipment also. Any questions for Chief? Not. Is there a motion approved? Move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Item number eight, resolutions. Under letter A, we have consideration and action, if any, on a resolution submitting entitlement vote for candidates to Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors 2026 through 2029. Ms. Escalante?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. At this moment, there is five nominees, and we have, the city of San Juan has 22 votes. You can go ahead and divide the 22 votes amongst the five candidates for nominees, or you can give all 22 to one.
This would be a consensus item, so there would have to be a motion. How you want to divide a second and then have to be a vote by the majority?
Those couple nominations last time, right?
Last time was just a nomination.
Okay, so it's a nominee?
This time, the city has 22 votes. You could give them all to one, or partial, or none, but it would have to be a motion and a second.
All those in favor, motion. You go ahead and vote to come to both to the back. Second, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 22 to one.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consent agenda. Letter A, consider the second and final reading of an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through business and the sale of alcohol beverages, BG wine and malt beverages retailers on premise permit at Intoxico Drive-Thru, located at 912B Business 83, legally described as Lot 6, Mirela subdivision, as requested by Llorente Enterprises LLC. And under letter B, we have the, consider second and final reading of the ordinance regarding the conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol beverages, BG wine and malt beverages retail dealers on premise permit. FB, food and beverage certificate. LH, late hour certificate at Taki Tacon Restaurant, located at 2025 North Fau Longoria Road, Suites B and C, legally described as lots 1 through 3, Block 1. Paradise Park subdivision, as requested by Taki Tacon LLC. And letter C, we have consider approval of the city commission meeting minutes from May 14th, 2025, and July 22nd, 2025. Item number 10, executive session. The city of San Juan Commission will convene an executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Vernon's Texas Statutes and Codes, annotated Government Code, Chapter 551.071, consultation with attorney. Under item number one, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action regarding legal matters concerning vexes fiber cable. Number two, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action of legal matters concerning the north side San Juan Park. Pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action regarding legal issues concerning entertainment for 2025 Noche de Paz. Item number four, pursuant to section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and pursuant to section 551.071, personnel matters, discussion regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Director of Planning and Zoning, Director of Utilities, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Director of Finance. Number five, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action regarding legal matters pertaining to potential litigation concerning an employment contract.
We're back from executive session. Is there a motion to reconvene?
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Viegas, second by Commissioner Cantú. It is 8:02 PM. First item is pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action regarding legal matters pertaining vexes fiber cable. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to concede as directors and executives.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Viegas, second by Commissioner Cantú. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number two, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion of possible action on legal... consultation with attorney, discussing, discussion of possible action on legal matters concerning the north San Juan Park, there is no action. Uh, number three, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussion and possible action regarding legal issues concerning entertainment for the Noche de Pas 2025. Again, that one is no action. Number four, pursuant to section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and pursuant to sections 551.074, personnel matters, discussion regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Director of Planning and Zoning, Director of Utilities, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Director of Finance. That one is also no action. Number five, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, discussing impossible action regarding legal matters pertaining to potential litigation concerning unemployment contract. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
A motion to have the city attorney and city manager proceed as discussed in executive session. Uh, motion by Commissioner Villegas, second by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, signature by Senator Saini.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second, motion by Commissioner Villegas, second by Commissioner Cantu. It is 8:04, all in favor, signature by Senator Saini.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we are done.